Good evening and welcome to the February 3rd, 2020 regular meeting of the School Committee of the Town of Foxborough. We have a fairly brief but action-packed agenda tonight, and we're going to begin with our open public comment period. Is there anyone here who would like to join us for open public comment?
Yes.
Come on up, Sarah.
Hey, buddy.
And bring your friend.
Aww.
Chris.
Hi, Griz. Sarah, make sure you speak loud enough into the microphone for us so everyone at home can hear you.
All right. All right. Hi, I'm Sarah Scardacci. I'm a senior at Foxborough High School, and this is my friend Griz. I've been working with Golden Opportunities for Independence in Walpole to help train him as a therapy and school resource dog, and I'm hoping that once the Assistance Animal Policy gets final approval, that I might be able to bring him into the high school and all of the other schools as a means of helping the students cope with anxiety and mental health issues, as well as day-to-day anxieties, and for some of the younger kids, some of the more social-emotional learning type of situations. So, yes.
And you wanted to give us a demonstration?
Um, yeah. So, Griz? So, he is working on lots of different stuff right now, so I'll see if I can get him. Ready, Griz? Can I show them under?
Oh.
Aww.
That's excellent. So, he's working on lots of different stuff right now in training, and since he's only seven months old, he's not working on task work just yet, but he's going to start pretty soon. So, right now, what he's working on is maintaining his composure and working on more obedience-type training so that he's calm and collected in an environment. We've been working with him in crowds and in different environments. Like, this weekend, I had him at Home Depot, and he was practicing his under, and we were working, walking through crowds and little kids banging hammers on a table. So, he did really well, and I'm hoping that soon he'll be able to start doing deep pressure therapy for kids with anxiety and depression, which kind of helps to alleviate some of the symptoms.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Sarah while she's here with Griz?
I think he's wonderful for only, only seven months old.
Yes.
Already.
And you've been working with him all seven months?
I've only been working with him since October. So, before then, he was kind of in and out of training, and he was living at Golden Opportunities for Independence, so he was kind of learning the whole getting everything together. And then, when I got him and he started living at my house, we've been bringing him back and forth to training, so he's gotten into a little bit more of a routine. So, now, he's really getting stuff down and really getting the hang of it.
He doesn't look very excited about our meeting.
He's absolutely.
He's very calm.
Well behaved.
He's supposed to be cool and calm.
If he's supposed to be cool and calm, he is fulfilling that.
He is supposed to be cool and calm.
What are some of the other things he'll be fully, when he's fully trained? The deep pressure.
Yep.
But what else will he be trained to do as a therapy dog?
He will also be trained to recognize anxiety. I know Pauline Hagler, the owner at Golden Opportunities for Independence, one of her personal dogs is a therapy dog, and she brings her to nursing homes. And the one thing that she's really, really good at is recognizing and being able to smell anxiety and depression on some of the older people. And she gravitates toward those people and kind of gives them a little bit more time with her so that they can kind of calm down, and she can smell all of that type of stuff so she can smell the anxiety and depression, and she can also kind of sense when people have calmed down. So, then she knows that it's time to move on. And that's the really good thing about the Golden Retrievers is they're very, like, they know how to think on their own. Like, I know Germans are really good for task work, but they are really excellent for being able to think on their own.
I have a Golden Retriever. I know this for a fact.
Oh, they're very smart.
She uses her power for evil, not good.
Mine. Oh, yeah. Some of them are escape artists. Like, they will get.
All of our learners.
They are escape artists. They are so smart. But, yeah, so, he's working, and I'm hoping that he will get to come visit the school soon. I know he's coming in to visit on Thursday because I have an interview with Channel 5 News that they wanted to feature him, so I'm bringing him with me to school.
And Mrs. Myers-Pacla has approved all that?
Yep.
And we're all good with that?
Yep.
That's wonderful. Do you have anything else you'd like to share with the committee?
Um, I don't think so. I just wanted to introduce my little friend.
Well, it's very nicely and very timely, as you know. We're going to be talking about the Assistance Animals Policy after we approve some minutes, and we're giving it a lot of thought. We want to make sure we do our due diligence and have everything in place to keep, you know, our school safe for everybody and make sure that it fits with the mission of Foxborough Public Schools. But we really appreciate you bringing Griz in.
He's making himself comfortable.
To see us tonight. He's got under completely done.
Oh, he is. Wonderful with that. We were working on his jump, too, although I don't really think he'll be using that in the school.
Well, you don't need to do jumps. We don't want to knock over any of the microphones.
Oh, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah. If you need a dog sitter, I'm available.
I might have to take you up on that.
All right.
Going away during February vacation.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Griz.
Thank you, Sarah.
Hi, Griz.
Thanks, Griz.
Thanks so much.
Hey, Griz.
Griz? Grizzly.
Love it.
All right. Thanks very much, Sarah. So, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is approval of minutes. We have a couple policy subcommittee meeting minutes that we can start with, and then we've got our regular meeting minutes from last Monday. Policy Subcommittee is January 8th, 2020. Does anyone have any changes or additions, subtractions? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 8th, 2020, as presented.
Thank you, Beverly.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval? Thank you. The January 8th minutes are so approved, 5-0-0. The next, our policy Subcommittee has been hard at work. We have another set of minutes from January 22nd, 2020. Does anyone have any changes?
No. Thank you, Rich.
Anyone? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve these minutes?
I'm moved to approve the minutes presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the January 22nd minutes? 5-0-0. Thank you very much. We have our meeting minutes from last Monday, the January 27th, 2020, meeting minutes. Does anyone have anything? I did not. We did a lot last Monday.
We did.
We did. That's my comment, but I don't have any changes to those. Okay. If there are no changes, would anyone like to make a motion to approve these minutes as presented?
I'm moved to approve the committee minutes of January 27th, presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Beverly. Any further discussion? All those in favor? 5-0-0 to approve the January 27th meeting minutes. Okay. Now, we are moving on to the second reading of Policy IMG-A Assistance Animals, which we have in front of us. And we do have some fairly significant changes that we made last time. Not significant, but meaningful. I guess, I don't know, those are synonyms, really. I don't know what I'm saying. But do we want to, would anyone like to move to read the waiving, or should we waive the reading, that is?
I would. I'm unless there are questions on the additions. I would move to waive the second reading.
Okay. I don't have any questions, but we do have some subtractions that we need to discuss, so.
Please.
We can do that without and waive the reading. So, there's a motion to waive the reading. Would anyone like to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in.
Before we approve that?
Yep.
So, I'm fine to waive it? Can we waive it as requested and then just still read the sections that were changed?
Yes. Yes, we can.
So, this is going to be a waive to read the whole document in its entirety?
To read the document in its entirety, but we can discuss the changes and the subtractions, yes.
Good.
I think we need to, as a matter of fact.
That's what I was hoping to do. I would agree, too. That's what I was thinking, so.
That's what I was curious.
So, I wanted to make sure that was what the motion was. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. So, all those in favor of waiving the reading of the entire document? That's 5-0-0 to waive the reading. Okay. So, now, we have in front of us the Assistance Animals Policy IMG-A, which we discussed in great detail at our last meeting. But since then, we have made the suggested changes, and we've had some information about insurance. And Dr. Beras, would you like to?
Sure.
Speak to that, or do you want to, should we go through the changes one by one?
As far as the first changes, if we're okay with R and 2.
Yeah.
His, her, or their.
Yeah.
Just go to the next section?
Yes.
Is that all right with the certification requirements?
Yes.
So, in the first bullet there, we talked about.
I just have one question on that sentence. I'm sorry.
Which one?
On the, in the very first paragraph, the one that we just, and this may not be, make a difference as far as the substance, but is it, are the animals certified to work with a specific trainer? Meaning, like Griz is going to work, would work with Sarah, as an example of what we just had? Or is it the animal is certified, and the trainer is certified, and they both come together, but they, you could, they're not necessarily teamed up?
You can have, you can have a certified animal, but to be with different handlers.
Okay. Okay.
That was his question.
That's my question.
They have to have training, too. It can't just be with someone.
No, I understand that. So, the trainer has to be certified, and the animal has to be certified.
Correct.
But they don't, they're not always a team, right? Okay.
Okay.
And I don't know if it makes a difference, but that doesn't, I'm not sure that that reads that way here. And it may not make a difference as far as the policy goes. I just wanted, I don't think that that's clear in this standard.
This is new area, so it's good to talk through the potential, you know, questions.
Questions.
Certainly.
Because the way this reads is Assistance Animals are certified with their certified owner/handlers. So, it makes it seem like it is a.
A match.
Yes.
Would you take out "their" before "certified owner/handler"?
Or you could say, "Are Assistance Animals certified along with a certified owner/handler"?
Yeah.
I don't know if that changed it. And like I said, I don't know if this makes a difference as far as what the policy is. It just doesn't.
Well, you want your policy to be as clear as it can be.
Clear and straightforward.
So that if someone picks it up and says, "Well, what do I need to know to?
Right.
To bring an Assistance Animal into Foxborough Public Schools?", that they, this answers their questions accurately.
I would, based on the discussion that we had with the woman that came in to discuss the dogs in general at one of the meetings that we had.
You talking about when Sarah came in?
No, it was, we, the other woman that actually runs the group.
Oh, Golden Opportunities.
The, they are trained together. I mean, the dog doesn't just go off on his own.
Right.
The dog lives with a trainer who basically is responsible for the dog, to keep the dog in check and trained as they're going. You do have the right to have others that have to be trained to, you know, maybe to use them during the day and stuff, but they always go back to an owner/trainer that just may not be the one that's always here.
So, maybe we separate the owners and the handlers part as two different parts because it could be, there is always an owner.
Well, it's good, but there's always, to the point that she was originally making, there would always be somebody potentially here that was trained.
Always, right, right.
Because that's where the dog would be dropped off to.
Right.
But then go home with the owners and trainer that is actually the owner.
So, could it be a certified owner or handler, or certified handler at the school?
Right.
And we separate it that way?
Right. Because I think that that's, that's an interesting difference there. If it says, like, the owner, so Sarah could drop Griz off, and somebody else that is certified could be here with it.
Like the SRO.
Right. That's not, then I think we should clarify that.
I think we need to clarify that.
Thank you, Bill.
I think that's a good point. Okay. So, how do we want to clarify that within this policy, then?
And Sarah, thank you for being here, giving me an example with real names.
Absolutely.
And may be accompanied by their certified owner or a certified handler? Would that do it?
Well, I would offer to you that I, if you go ahead to this next section we were about to address, we were using the word handler slash animal team. So, I think we could also discuss, I don't disagree that that may be a result that we have to separate people, but I would also suggest I'm not afraid to have a policy that says exactly this, so that right now, our school, our system with this policy, will be using people that are linked. We're not going to have the opportunity to use non- linked. So, that's another possibility, right?
Well, the only part of that is, for instance, let's say the SRO.
Yep.
Was the one linked, and the SRO gets called away to point to where another school or something, or can't take the dog with them. So, if you have another certified or trained individual.
At the school.
At the school, then the dog can stay there at the school and doesn't have to go with the SRO if the SRO gets called off.
So, that's why you would do that. Good point.
I have a suggestion that might simplify it.
Excellent.
Except if you say Assistance Animals are certified and work with certified owner/handlers to provide emotional, da-da-da-da.
Yeah.
If you just take out "their" and you add.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
And work with.
Yeah, I think that's good, and.
And work.
Work.
The words, yeah, and work with.
And work with certified owner/handlers to provide. And then that way, that way, the district can ensure that there are certified owner/handlers in place to work.
Fair enough. Okay, so how will that whole sentence read, then?
Assistance Animals are certified.
Yeah.
And work with certified owner/handlers to provide emotional and physical support in the educational setting.
That's good. And then we define further the certification requirements in later on in, on the same page. That will work. That will work.
That's good. I like that.
Thank you. That's good, Brent.
It's rare that I come up with a simple solution.
There's even the conversation in talking with the two SROs.
Oh, yeah, see?
It could be, let's say, the animal is with Officer Montrose. It then needs, he needs to go, and then.
Right.
The animal's with Officer Azavito. Right.
But it's important to know that that could happen, as opposed to locking it together. We want the flexibility, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing it up, Rob.
That does clarify that.
It's a nice fix.
All right, so.
Want to put a certification requirements?
Yes. Let's move down to certification requirements, then.
So, the first part is the certification, which we're talking about, which is important, but that second bullet, which has to do with insurance. Bill, do you want to share what you've learned from Maya?
Yeah. I spoke to the town's insurer, and basically, unless the town owns the dog, and, you know, that is a possibility down the road, but unless the town owns the dog, the town's ensuring, insurance company cannot insure the dog because it's, it's not our property, if you will. So, their requirement would be that the owner or handler, well, actually, the owner of the dog would have to have, obviously, a liability policy, and they would give the town a certificate of insurance that basically names the town as an additional insured. We do this a lot when we have people that rent spaces within our buildings and stuff. They give us their insurance policy, naming the town, and that's what covers them, not our insurance company. And again, it's because we're not the owners of the, of the animal itself. In our general liabilities would then still cover us as a, as a community, but the main policy is obviously the one that's on the dog itself.
Okay.
And that is the reason for the insertion that you see.
No, thank you.
Do we know, I mean, and maybe this is more of a, could we ask other districts that are doing, have programs like this already in place, if this is something they have difficulty obtaining, or if this is something that is a matter of form, or if it just depends on the situation?
From the districts I've talked with, they, they own the animal.
They own the animal.
Because of either it's through the SRO.
Yep.
Or through an employee. So, that part, I think, it's different district to district. And we could definitely go back and gather some additional information, though.
I was just curious. I mean, I think it reads clearly, and it certainly states the requirement. I just wonder if it, you know, if it problematic for districts, or if it's something that someone says, "Okay, you know, I can do that for you."
Yeah, I don't think, it's not a problem to get the insurance because it is a common thing. Even homeowners can get an insurance on our policy. The question is the cost, and who's going to bear the cost of that if the owner doesn't have it in general? Now, I would say, in most cases, like I said, the people that rent buildings and stuff from us already have a liability and policy in place, and it's strictly a matter of naming us as an additional insured.
Right.
It doesn't change the policy or anything. It just names us as a person, so.
I've done that with other groups, yeah.
So, the policies are available, but.
Given that, in the event, in the future, if the town owns an assistance, an animal-assisted therapy, or dog, or whatever animal, would that, would that need to be amended, or would that also, as written, cover us if the town owned the dog?
Well, my, my assumption is it's not your policy that tells us what we insure and what we don't insure. It's our insurance policy. You know, it's the town-side policy that tells us that we insure buildings, we insure animals, we insure cars, that type of thing. So, it doesn't have to be in a policy. It's effectively a requirement, if you will, of our insurer.
Fine.
To cover it.
That's good. One less policy.
Does the insurance, does our town insurance policy or our insurance policy cover, like, if we have service animals? Because they're different.
If we own the animal.
No, I mean, if we have, because we currently have a policy where if someone needs to have a service, a seeing eye dog in school.
It's not our property. We don't insure.
So, that person still has to.
Right.
Insure themselves.
Is it the handler, or is it the handler's agency?
It's the owner. Whoever owns it.
Whoever owns it.
Okay.
So, this, we might, we might have to, I know this is wordsmithing words, but the words here are handler slash animal team.
Where was that?
But this whole, the two bullets under this section talk about handler slash animal team.
Yeah, no, it's a, this is a big one.
Neither one says owner.
Right.
And now, I think the second bullet does say handler, the handler must provide a certificate of assurance that the therapy agency is carrying the animal, or you could, that could be written.
As owner.
That the handler, well, you could also say the handler could be the handler, but they have to provide insurance for the animal. I mean, I don't, I don't know which is insured.
The owner is the insured.
I would think that is correct, too.
So, in that case.
We should change handler to owner.
Right.
In that case, in that one, we should change it to owner.
Right.
Because the handler couldn't, might not be the owner.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
So, in order for the handler to bring an animal in, he would have to.
Show proof.
Show proof that the owner has insurance.
So, the owner slash animal team is the way that would read?
No, we're talking about the second bullet.
Second bullet. Just say owner must provide.
Instead of handler must provide, owner must provide.
And I think you have to change it at the end of the sentence, too, though, is carrying the animal on their liability insurance, right?
Right, because they wouldn't be carrying the handler.
They wouldn't be carrying the handler. That's kind of where I was going with this handler.
Is it? I mean, are they? Is it, or is the handler also covered by the?
I don't believe so, but I don't know.
Remember that, it's just the animal?
It's just the animal.
It's just the animal.
Just the animal? Okay.
Owner, okay, and owner slash handler. Gotcha.
Just get rid of handler.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Do all the animals come from a therapy animal agency?
Well, if, if Sarah isn't an agency, she's working with an agency.
Correct. So, is it the therapy animal agency is carrying the animal on their liability insurance, or is it the owner that's carrying the animal on their liability?
The owner. It's the owner.
That's what I thought you were going after. So, I think therapy animal agency doesn't even work. So, that whole bullet should be.
Owner.
Owner must provide a certificate of insurance naming the town of Foxborough as an additional insurer, and that their animal.
That their owner.
And that the owner.
The owner.
That the owner is carrying animal, the animal, on their liability insurance? Make it specific to owner and the animal? Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
It's a little tricky, but I mean, it's.
That's more clear.
I think so.
It is.
So, take all of that out.
I think we still need to look at the first bullet and read it. And it's these two bullets together.
That's good. Thank you.
I think the thing, the thing that I hear tonight that we're talking about, which is interesting, is that the animal can be separate from the handler, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, I think the whole animal team is probably problematic. I could probably say the handler slash animal must be certified. I think, I think you're getting confused. Anybody who is dealing with that dog that is allowed to have the dog is a handler.
Is a handler.
Correct.
They might be separated from the owner.
Right.
But they'll never be separated from a handler.
So, the owner could, the owner's supposed to be the owner slash handler, but.
Right.
You know, Sarah could be the owner, I mean, the handler only that's at the school and then takes over the dog.
Right. And there's a, the implies that Sarah wouldn't necessarily be, thank you, again, thank you for being here.
Of course.
Really, this is great.
If you guys have any questions, too.
Yeah, jump in if you have something to add.
What I'm hearing in that implication is that Sarah wouldn't be working, or the handler would not be working with an animal that they were not familiar with, and the animal would not be working with a handler that they were not familiar with. And that's where that team concept comes in.
That's where the team would have to come in, I guess. That's right.
And they both would be certified.
Correct.
By an AAT program. Right?
I would think that they would be.
Yep.
But I think they would be certified individually, potentially, but not as a team.
Right.
Correct.
That's kind of what I was trying to say.
Yes.
I don't think they're going to be certified as a team, and I wonder if this says that. The animal team must be certified by the animal team member agency. And I think they're actually being certified separately is what I'm hearing now.
They could be.
They could be. Or they may or may not be, right?
Right.
So what you're saying is.
Maybe you don't need to touch anything.
Well, for bullet one, in that case, if you want to make it consistent with how we changed the intro paragraph, you'd say the animal and handler must be certified.
By, must be certified.
By an approved agency.
Yeah, can you just say by the member agency that is validated that? Their specific AAT program? That's a lot of that's in there. Must be certified by the member agency. That is validated that they're.
I don't, I don't think in this case, I don't think that sentence needs to be changed.
Okay. So it kind of works, because it kind of means everything.
Right, it means that if we're, if we, if we've contracted.
We really do work hard on these things.
If we've contracted with, with Golden.
Opportunities.
Thank you. I was going to say Golden Corral, but that's a restaurant.
Golden Opportunity.
Our golden acres, and that's a different thing.
Golden Opportunities.
Anyway, Golden Opportunities.
They're also known as Gophi.
So if we've, if we've contracted with them.
I'm going Gophi.
That means that all of their handlers, all of their animals and handlers that work together.
Exactly.
Are certified.
At the end of the day, it probably works. It probably does work.
I think we've come full circle on this sentence.
It makes sense. It doesn't, it doesn't lock us in either way.
Okay. All right. Turning the page to page three. All right. So we have struck the entire paragraph on insurance and have that covered under certification requirements.
Are you on page two, Tina?
I'm on page three. Did I?
You are advanced.
Did I miss a page? I thought we just finished page two.
We just finished page one.
We just finished page one.
You know what? Mine is misstapled by me. Sorry. I apologize. I wonder, I was like, what happened? I shouldn't print off my own information and staple it. My apologies. All right, let's go back to page two. All right. So starting at the top, we added the Senate service animals are defined under policy IMG animals in school. Which I think works.
That was just for clarity and to link the two policies.
Exactly.
And the other one is a?
The clarification of the acronym National Educations for Assistance Dog Services Needs. I don't see any other changes from the first reading here. Capitalization of superintendent.
So since we're back on this owner versus handler thing, I'm sorry.
No.
If we're looking at number three under standards and procedures, is it the handler that has to ensure that the animal receives all medical necessities, or is it the owner?
It would be the owner.
Should be, anything really with the dog should be the owner's overall responsibility.
Right.
So that affects bullet two?
Yes, it would.
Oh, sorry, number two, rather, and number three. Changing handler to owner.
Well, wait, no. So two, two is concerning the handler, not.
Correct.
That, that's the handler's registration as a handler.
You're right.
So that's fine, but three would be owner.
Thank you.
Ensuring that the assistance animal has all medical necessities, up-to-date vaccinations, and must submit the documentation. So those two things are separate. I guess it would just be changing handler to owner in paragraph three. All right. Okay. All right.
And then striking five. Looks good.
And then going on to page three now, in order. Sorry about that, again.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, it's just striking the paragraph on insurance and renumbering. Then at the bottom, adding a sentence, "For further information on the presence of animals in Foxborough Public Schools, please see policy IMG."
Right. Do we have to touch five and six up at the top?
Yeah. Six becomes five, seven becomes, oh, do we have to go through?
Five, the owner shall properly license the animal, not the handler.
Yep.
So that's five. And then six.
The owner.
Handler is the sole owner, solely responsible. That's.
That might not be the case.
Yeah, I know.
That sentence is incorrect.
What if we just say the owner is solely responsible for the animal?
Instead of saying sole owner, just say they're solely responsible.
Yeah, the owner of the assistance animal is solely responsible.
The owner.
But.
Yeah, but I think the handler is also responsible when they have the animal.
Right. That's where I was going.
In their possession, right? That's, yeah. The handler has some responsibility. Is solely response, but is not solely responsible for the animal. They're responsible.
Right.
When they're in the school with the animal, but they're not as an owner responsible.
But the handler, it says here, the handler is the sole owner of the assistance animal.
That might not be the case.
And that is not correct. We've just said the owner or a certified handler.
Because we separated earlier.
So we've got to change that.
Where did this language come from to begin with? That the handler is the sole owner of the assistance animal? I know you guys worked really hard on this.
Well, either Madsen or Easton.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and with the dash of Walpole.
They own them.
With the dash of Walpole.
Yep.
Just a smattering of Walpole.
What about taking the first sentence out?
Yep.
Yeah.
And then the town of Foxborough is only liable for the animal's actions when it is acting as an agent of the school, so it's a regular employees. I don't think we, maybe we don't, do we have to get into this policy about clarifying who the owner is and what the owner? Maybe we just take the first sentence out?
Well, haven't we already established that the owner is responsible for the animal in other parts of this policy?
Yeah.
Do we need to say the second sentence?
So we could leave it, strike the first sentence in that and leave it with the second.
Thoughts?
I don't think a sentence about liability ever hurts you when you're having a policy? More clear instead of less clear?
Kind of what I was thinking, just leave it in there. It clarifies that we are not the owners.
Right. But I, I don't think that first sentence needs to be.
Well, we could be, so we might want to say unless, unless, unless the owner is the town of Foxborough, the handler is considered the sole, the handler is considered the sole owner of the assistance animal and is solely responsible for the animal when on Foxborough Public School property. That would work. Something like that. Because we could be the owner.
Oh, in the future.
We're contemplating with this policy a scenario where we have an assistance animal that is owned by the town and, and living with one of our SROs.
Correct.
Can you repeat that rework idea?
I hope that I can. So the paragraph is number six, ownership. So that would start unless owned by the town of Foxborough.
Yeah.
The handler is considered, unless the animal is owned by the town of Foxborough, the handler is considered the sole owner of the assistance animal and would be solely responsible for the, or is solely responsible for the animal. What?
Yeah, I'd say, not say owner, because then we're confusing that, but they're solely responsible for.
That, yeah, you can, we can. Condense that down. So unless owned by the town of Foxborough.
Correct.
The handler, unless the animal is owned by the town of Foxborough, the handler is solely responsible for the animal when on Foxborough Public School property or when.
I like the language here, when it is acting as an agent of the school.
Yeah, like that.
Exactly. When it is acting as an agent of the school. And then clarify that the town is only responsible when it is acting as an agent of the school. I think that covers it. Yeah, I think it would.
Yeah, I think what this, this, this line is saying is that we don't have ownership.
Well, we might have ownership.
We may, we may. So this is just trying to clarify that someone else is the sole owner of the animal and responsible for that upkeep and life, life of the animal. The town of Foxborough is only liable when it's acting as the agent. But we may have that situation, so it's hard to say it.
And that's the tricky part, because we're trying to do two different things here, where many of the other districts, they, they own. And so we're trying to provide some flexibility here where we.
Well, we might, we might want to encompass both scenarios where we own a dog, but we also are open to having, you know, properly insured other sorts of therapy animals, you know, visit the school on a semi-regular basis.
Right.
Right?
So just to be clear, are you keeping the second sentence intact?
I think the second sentence is fine. The town of Foxborough is only liable for the animal's actions when it's acting as an agent of the school.
I wonder if you can just spell it out even clearer. The owner of the assistance animal is solely responsible for the animal. And if Foxborough, the town of Foxborough happens to be the owner, then that, that statement covers Foxborough, right? Isn't that what we're trying to say?
Well, so.
We're trying to say the owner is responsible for the animal. If Foxborough is the owner by record.
Then we're responsible.
By law, by purchase, by everything.
That makes sense, Richard, too.
If we're not the owner, then we're not the owner.
We were overthinking this.
I think if you just cut to the chase, right?
So we just said, I heard one thing and I'm reading something else. So I heard, as they say, the purpose of this statement is around care and feeding of the animal, which is different than being responsible or liable for the animal's actions when it's acting as an agent of the Foxborough School. So is this about ownership and responsibility for?
I didn't, he felt like it was care and feeding. I felt like it was.
Number six is all about liability and ownership.
Yeah.
Okay, because I heard something talk about. Okay, that's fine.
Should we, instead of calling, should we just call that liability then for number six instead of ownership? Since that's what we're talking about. I can probably complicate it further.
I'll just speak for myself. It, it worked in my mind if we just state the owner is solely responsible for the animal, and then with the sentence about liability is just covering liability sentence.
The owner of the assistance animal is solely responsible for the animal.
So that spells that out.
Just do that.
And then leave it out of Foxborough line?
Yeah. Yeah, because.
The owner, no matter who.
The owner of the assistance animal is solely responsible for the animal. Yeah, I'd leave it in as a disclaimer. I'm, I'm sorry.
I would leave it in. I'm more concerned that there's something in the law that I don't know about that would attribute responsibility to someone if it's not stated.
I, I would agree with that.
That's what I was thinking from a legal perspective. Once you say the owner's the owner, then the owner has responsibilities, right?
Right.
As we all have with owning an animal. And then, you know, if, it's almost like if you take that out, I don't know if there's some kind of legal responsibility once the animal shows up on the property. Not ownership responsibility of a care and feeding, but some other, some other liability. That's kind of what, that's why I think the sentence might have value.
And I'm also, and I'll just, I mean, it's your policy, but it's just a thought that Deanne Brown did look at this and gave suggestions, but at the same time, we still have a number of questions on liability and particularly around insurance. That it, it could be that we want to take this to a third reading and go back and.
Oh, I think so. Based on this discussion.
At this point, we should.
I was thinking I was going to move that.
I mean, we, we want to make sure we get it right and, and do the right thing.
I would just like to.
Yeah.
So we're going to change that sentence right now to this little tweet. The owner has sole responsibility, but maybe leave the liability in there.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Could we also go back to five, because I know we skipped over it?
Yes.
But this, five sends the handler shall properly license the animal with the appropriate municipality.
Change it to.
I don't know, I don't think we have to tell what the handler has to do. We just have to say the animal has to be properly licensed with the appropriate municipality. Isn't that, isn't that what the license is?
The animal shall be licensed?
Yeah, I think it's what it is. I don't think we have to tell the handler to go get a license.
Correct.
I think we need the animal to have a license.
We changed it to owner.
The owner shall properly license the animal with appropriateness.
So does the policy, should we, should a policy, we have tell the owner what to do, or should we just say we're not bringing a dog unless it's properly licensed? That's where I was going.
Oh.
Does it make a difference?
It probably doesn't, really. I guess it doesn't.
It's really a proof of licensure.
That's kind of what I was thinking. I mean, I don't need to tell the owner to go do it. We just need to have a license for the animal. But that's what I was thinking. Because that, that's almost like.
Well, then, but we're going to look for the owner to provide proof of, so that could be that, that could change into that, which is the owner shall provide.
Yeah, exactly.
Proof of, you know, proof of licensure.
With the appropriate municipality.
Yeah, actually, I think that's, that's better.
I don't think we should have a policy telling someone else what to do.
Well, we, we actually need to see it before you're going to bring the dog, and we have to have all of the paperwork in order. And that's part of it. I think shall provide.
That's what I mentioned.
Proof of.
Proof of licensure.
Yep.
We won't engage unless we see proof. We don't have to tell you what to do and how to do.
Sometimes these things take a little more work than two readings, so.
I may have to go spend some time with the dog if you guys.
One thing is to get it correct.
That's right.
This is the calmest dog after being talked about all this way, too. Poor Grizz is down there thinking they're talking about me the whole time.
He's been wonderful. He can come to all of our meetings.
I think he senses some anxiety on this side of the table.
We don't want to discourage him.
No, not at all. All right, is there anything else that we, we want to discuss? I did want to emphasize, I, I had seen a couple comments on social media about allergies and that, you know, we will treat allergies towards animals. When having animals in school, we already have an animals in school policy that addresses allergies and how to handle allergies of students and staff.
Yes.
Who might be in the school. But did you, could you speak to that just a little bit? Because there is some concern out there.
There, there would be, just as we have with any allergies, procedures that are in place with the process as far as communication that would take place with any classrooms, with any parents, that the animal would be visiting. We would take precautions, I mean, from the things of washing hands, making sure that there's not any allergies, the nurse would be involved. So all of those precautions would be taken into account.
So with that being said, does it make sense to make a note that this, that that policy?
Well, we're cross-referencing them.
Yeah, I think cross-referencing them is just, is fine.
Right, right, right. But isn't that, is that the IMG policy?
Yes, that is the IMG policy, yep. So we have cross-referencing. But since we're discussing this and talking about it, I just wanted to get it out there to, you know, all of our three people who watch at home.
There's five.
At least five. I know my mom watches, but she doesn't live in Foxborough, so.
Can I move to?
Yes, please do.
I was going to, I was.
Are you going to move it? Would we be done?
Yeah, move it to a third reading.
Do you have more to add?
Yeah, I just, as I'm just going backwards, there's a whole paragraph there on the handler that probably needs to be addressed again.
Where are you looking?
Page.
The second paragraph of page, of page two. And the handler will so responsibly for the assistance animal's care, behavior, suitability if you're interacting with students. I don't think we should probably tell the handler that they're responsible for the care.
No, it's while the.
But behavior and suitability.
While it's our school poverty. I think that, that works. I think that works.
You still comfortable with it?
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But.
Thank you, thank you.
No, no, that's.
All right.
Want to be comfortable.
That's good.
Brent, did you want to make a motion?
I did. I wanted.
All right, can I, quick, one more. Can we go to two under training and reservation, uh, resi, uh, registration? The handler should submit proof of registration or owner.
No, that's the handler's proof of registration for themselves as a handler.
Oh, I understand, got it. Yeah.
So that differs from the licensure that we discussed later on.
Thank you.
And these are the animals that I, um, registered.
To work with.
Are you comfortable with that, Bevy?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Just what, it's a good clarification.
No, it's important.
That's good.
It's very important. It's a good point.
We just have gone over the owner handler so much, I just.
No, it's, well, we have to.
I actually think we're going to have to read through the entire policy at the third reading. But we're going to get this right and make sure that it's, it is the, it is well-worded.
Right. Mr. Pearson's ready, excited to read it a third time.
It's not a long one.
Mr. Ritter, would you like to make your motion now?
Yes, I move that, we move assistance animals policy IMG-A to a third reading to review changes discussed here tonight.
I second that. I second that.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of moving this forward to a third reading, that would be five zero zero, all right. And thank you, everyone, for all the thought you put into this. And thank you, Sarah, for coming forward. We're going to get this right for everybody, okay?
You guys are doing a good job.
Thank you.
We'll get there.
Especially the animals.
We want to make sure it's, it's not stressful for, the whole point is to reduce stress, so we're going to get it right. All right, so we have another policy coming up. Oh, Joe, did you have a question?
Oh, I wanted to point out, the last time that the animals in schools policy was reviewed was April of 2011.
Yep.
No, that's right.
That's right.
Some correct.
We discussed that last week.
That was a new policy back...
Yeah, and we're, we're dovetailing it with this now.
Will that be looked at as a revised policy?
No, we don't think it need, that policy needs revision at this point. The policy subcommittee has already taken a look at that in conjunction with this policy. So that policy is a standalone policy that we're going to cross-reference within the Assistance Animals policy. So we will have both of them in place because they're really two distinct and different sets of circumstances.
And that one will, should carry the present date, right?
Joe, thank you, that's an important point to bring up for people because that policy...
The original one from 2011 should now read 2020, right?
Well, we haven't, we haven't done a reading or gone through it or re-approved it. I mean, we just, we have reviewed it in conjunction with this one, but we made no changes, so I think it just stands the way it is.
Well, could we, could we make a note, or, or should we make a note, reviewed in conjunction with and put the date?
We could do that.
With the new part?
We could do that.
I mean, I would think, I would think that, I would feel more comfortable with that because if it stands 2011, it looks like we haven't...
Well, truthfully, we probably should cross-reference that policy to this policy if we're going to be consistent, so that's a good point, so.
Once this is approved, sorry, Tina, I made a picture of it, I apologize.
No, no, that's fine. I think once this is approved, we should add that cross-reference just as a, in, in the reviewed and approved.
I agree.
Yep.
I agree.
Reviewed in conjunction with and put it on the original policy.
Probably could, yeah.
Yeah.
Just so that, you know...
This makes sense.
Joe, thanks for bringing that up.
Otherwise, it's dormant.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Well, we have just reviewed and gone through it. We haven't made any changes. But that would, that would, that would be a good thing to do.
Reviewed in conjunction with would work for me.
Yeah, well, let's do it. We can bring that forward to, with the... Okay. So, our next item on the agenda is the first reading of Policy J J I F, the Prevention and Management of Head Injuries and Concussions in Extracurricular Athletic Activities. And I am sorry, gentlemen, but we do have to read the whole thing.
Oh, yeah.
Going forward, yes, we do. And Sarah, you and Chris do not have to stay for this, so I'm sure you have homework and stuff. You're more than welcome to stay. It's a lot of fun, right, Chris? Right, Kiar?
Green with envy.
Sarah, if you'd like to, you could take a copy off the table to read.
I just wanted to know if you guys wanted to say goodbye.
Everyone, I say hello.
Hi, Grizz.
Hi, Grizz.
I'm coming to babysit.
He is beautiful.
He's beautiful.
Thank you.
Sweetie pie.
Yeah, watch out for the wires, for sure.
Oh, this is good training for us, too.
It is.
On how to react to our therapy animal.
Grizzie.
That's not a good thing, yeah.
Grizz can come to all our meetings, Sarah.
He's a love. He loves people.
Hi.
So cute.
Everyone's super excited for him to come in on Thursday.
Oh, I bet.
So that's, is that part, that's part of his training to focus in and as you walk him up to a person, right?
Yep, yeah.
Here we go, Grizz, I'm over here. Oh, yes. Oh, no, 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 no. There's a special cookie in that bag.
Grizz knows.
He can tell.
Oh, totally.
Oh, oh, yes.
But I love them.
You're in love.
Have a good night.
Grizz is just going to stick right with you, which makes sense.
I'm going to get the heavy sniff from my three dogs.
All right.
You're going to be like, who have you been visiting? Bye, Grizz, thanks for calling. Very sweet, too.
Well, they're trying, I think they're training. Actually, the bomb dogs.
Go home and you're asleep now.
Oh, thank you. That's home training, too.
That's why, yeah, you're trained, too.
So I tell them, I'm at work this time, no food. Hello. They went right by me. No. Hello. I should be saying goodbye.
Yeah, I'll see you soon, okay, bud. Let me know when you're coming, all right?
All right. Who's going to start the reading? Which one of you gets the pleasure?
I'll start.
Thanks, Sarah. Bye, Grizz.
Bye, Sarah. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Who would like to begin the reading?
I think Brett can begin, but I just wanted to make sure we thank Dr. Burdo's, the athletic director, Joe Cusack, and just for all their work that they did because the concussion management policies really have a sweeping impact across so many parts of our schools. So Dr. Burdo spoke to the school nurse here at the high school, I believe, and had Mr. Cusack actually do all his research on what we do. So I appreciate all your work and all the school's work on looking at this policy, finding out how we actually do what we do, and then putting it into this policy. So there was a lot of work behind the scenes besides just Brett and I talking about it, so thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that, Richard, and thank you.
It's important because the school's so deeply involved in these.
Yes.
To do what this says, the school has to be integrated deeply into it, so I think it was good work.
And also, part of our contract with Brigham and...
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. They're also reviewing the policy for us right now, too.
Oh, good, Brigham? Excellent.
Yeah, thank you. Shall we? Right away.
All right. First reading of Policy J J I F, the Prevention and Management of Head Injuries and Concussions in Extracurricular Athletic Activities. It is the commit, uh, sorry, it is the commitment of the Foxborough School Committee to provide a healthy and safe environment for all students. The prevention and management of sports-related head injuries is part of this commitment to the health and well-being of students. The purpose of this policy is to provide standardized guidelines, expectations, and instructions for persons involved in the prevention, training, management, and return-to-activity decisions regarding students who incur head injuries while involved in all athletic extracurricular activities, including marching band, in order to protect their health and safety. Policies and procedures established regarding sports-related head injuries shall be developed, reviewed, and revised every two years by a team consisting of: school administrator, school nurse, school physician, athletic director, certified athletic trainer, guidance counselor, teacher, and/or marching band director. The athletic director shall be responsible for overseeing the development, implementation, and revision of all policies, procedures, and protocols regarding the school system's management of head injuries and concussions in all extracurricular athletic activities. The athletic director, coaches, certified athletic trainers, and school nurses, whether employed directly by the school or through contracted means, shall be responsible for all duties and responsibilities outlined in this policy. A concussion is a head injury to the brain, and concussions are serious. A concussion may be defined as the immediate and transient impairment of neurological function. It may be a consequence of an athlete's head striking an object, such as a floor or another head, an object striking the head, such as a ball, bat, stick, or another head, or the result of a sudden change in the direction of the head and neck, such as in a whiplash-type injury. Concussions generally cause specific signs that can be observed by others and symptoms that are reported by the athlete. Recognition and proper management of concussions can prevent further injury and even, and even death. Recognition and appropriate management of concussions require coordinated effort of a number of people as outlined in MGLC 111, Section 222, and 105 CMR 201 dot 00.
Communications and Training. Roman numeral one, informing parents, students, and staff on the prevention and management of head injuries and concussion in extracurricular athletic activities policy annually. First bullet, information regarding sports-related head injury will be included in all student handbooks that students and parents receive, and appropriate training will be provided. Second bullet, this policy and all appropriate forms shall be posted on appropriate school websites. And third bullet, this policy and all appropriate forms shall be translated and explained to parents with limited English proficiency by a member of the school. Now, keep going, yeah? Roman numeral two, notification of parents of suspected head injury or concussion. First bullet, a player's coach shall notify the student's parents in person or by telephone immediately following the practice or competition in which a player has been removed from play due to a suspected head injury, concussion, signs and symptoms of a concussion, or loss of consciousness. Second bullet, by the end of the next business day, the parents shall receive in writing on paper or in electronic format information regarding the injury.
Three, notification of athletic director and school nurse of suspected head injury or concussion. A coach or designee shall notify the athletic director, athletic trainer, and school nurse that a player has been removed from play due to a suspected head injury, concussion, signs and symptoms of a concussion, or loss of consciousness by the end of the next business day. Number four, annual training required. First bullet, annual training is required per 105 CMR 201 dot 007 regarding the prevention and recognition of sports-related head injury and associated health risks, including second impact syndrome. Annual training must be completed by coaches, certified athletic trainers, volunteers, school physician, school nurses, athletic director, marching band director, parents of students and students who participate in athletic and marching band extracurricular activities. Annual training requirements can be met by completing the concussion in sports course on the NFHSL... Oh, S L Learn, sorry about that, at the National Federation of State High School Associations website at www.nflhslern.com. Next bullet, annual training for parents and students can also be completed by: one, attending the annual athletic program, athletic night program, which includes concussion training; or two, the reading, the, reading the appropriate, for parents and athletes, heads-up concussions in high school sports fact sheet provided by the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention at www.cdc.gov/headsup. Parents and students who attend athletic night program and/or who read the fact sheets will be asked to sign an acknowledgement via the online platform that they have read and understood this information. Next bullet, training will be held for all coaches, certified athletic trainers, and volunteers to teach form, techniques, and skills to promote protective equipment used to minimize sports-related head injuries and to prohibit athletes from engaging in unreasonable, dangerous athletic technique that endangers the health or safety of an athlete, such as using a helmet or any other sports equipment as a weapon. Next bullet, handbooks distributed to staff, students, and their parents will contain information on prevention and recognition of sports-related head injuries, head injury, and associated health risks, including second impact syndrome, and will utilize information from the National Federation of State High School Associations located at www.nflhslern.com. Next bullet, students shall not be allowed to participate in extracurricular activities unless both student and parent/guardian have completed concussion training. Last bullet, documentation of successful completion of annual training will be managed by the athletic director.
Next section, documentation, physical examination, reporting, and clearance/return to play. Roman numeral one, documentation of a physical examination prior to a student's participation in any extracurricular, athletic, or marching band activity must be completed annually, consistent with 105 CMR 200 dot 100 B3, physical examination of schoolchildren, and will be placed in the student's health record file as kept by the school nurse. Next bullet, first bullet, before the start of every sports season, the student and the parent shall complete and submit a current preparticipation form or school-based equivalent signed by both, which provides a comprehensive history with up-to-date information relative to concussion history and head, face, or cervical spine injury history, and any history of co-existent concussive injuries. Second bullet, information on preparticipation forms and documentation will be maintained by the school and reviewed by the athlete's coach, school nurse, athletic trainer, and team physician as appropriate. Clearance to participate in extracurricular activities will be made by the physician who has completed the student's preparticipation physical. Based upon this review and after consultation with the student's physician, appropriate school athletic staff and the parent, the school may use a student's history of head injury or concussion as a factor to determine whether to allow the student to participate in an extracurricular athletic activity or marching band activity, and whether to allow participation under specific conditions or modifications. Students will complete neurophysiological testing at appropriate intervals during their interest classic athletics career. This testing will serve as a baseline to assist in any return-to-play decisions. Next bullet, any student who, in the judgment of the coach, athletic trainer, or other appropriately trained individual during a practice or competition sustains a head injury or suspected concussion or exhibits signs and symptoms of a concussion or loses consciousness even briefly, shall be removed from the practice or competition immediately and may not return to the practice or competition that day. Next bullet, a report of head injury form shall be completed by the athletic trainer if present during the practice or competition. If an athletic trainer is not present, the report of head injury form shall be completed by the coach. The coach shall notify the athletic trainer, athletic director, school nurse, and parent as specified in 105 CMR 201 dot 010C and 105 CMR 201 dot 010D. This form shall be reviewed and placed in the student's health record as per 105 CMR 201 dot 015. Based upon discussion with the student, parent, and athletic trainer, the student's physician or the school team physician shall be notified as appropriate by the coach, athletic trainer, or parent for appropriate medical evaluation and follow-up. Final bullet, all records concerning sports-related head injury/concussions will be maintained for a minimum of three years after the student graduates or leaves school.
Roman two, medical clearance and return to play. First bullet, student will not return to practice or competition unless and until the student provides medical clearance and authorization by a physician, return to play. Next, each student who is removed from practice or competition and subsequently diagnosed with a concussion shall have a written graduated reentry plan for return to full academic and extracurricular, athletic, or marching band activities. The plan will be developed by the students, oops, will be developed by the students' teachers, the student's guidance counselor, the school nurse, certified athletic trainer, neuropsychologist, if available, or involved parent, members of the building-based, oops, building-based support and assistance team, or individualized education program team, as appropriate, in consultation with the physician who is managing the student's recovery and will be responsible for clearing the student to return to academic and extracurricular athletic activities. The written plan will include instructions for students, parents, and school personnel addressing, but not limited to, physical and cognitive rest as appropriate, graduated return to extracurricular athletic activities and classroom studies as appropriate, including accommodations or modifications as needed, estimated time intervals for resumption of activities, frequency of assessments as appropriate by the school nurse, school physician, certified athletic trainer, or neuropsychologist, if available, until full return to classroom and extracurricular activities are authorized. The plan will be developed in coordination between and among school personnel and between the school, parent, and the student's primary care provider, the school physician, or the physician who made the diagnosis and who is managing the student's recovery. The student must be completely symptom-free and medically cleared in order to begin graduated reentry to extracurricular, athletic, or marching band activities. Each student who is removed from practice or competition for head injury or suspected concussion or losses of consciousness even briefly, or exhibits signs and symptoms for a concussion, will obtain and present to the athletic or marching band director a post-sports-related head injury medical clearance and authorization form prior to resuming any extracurricular, athletic, or marching band activity. This form, or school-based equivalent form, must be completed by a physician or one of the individuals as authorized by 105 CMR 201 dot 011A. The ultimate return-to-play decision is a medical decision that may involve a multidisciplinary approach, including consultation with parents, the school nurse, and teachers as appropriate. Only the following individuals may authorize a student to return to play: a licensed physician, a licensed certified athletic trainer in consultation with a licensed physician, a licensed nurse practitioner in consultation with a licensed physician, or licensed neuropsychologist in coordination with the physician managing the student's return. If necessary, the district physician will serve as the final authority regarding the ability of a student to return to extracurricular, athletic, athletic activities or marching band activities after suffering from a head or concussive injury. Legal references, MGL 111, with cross-references, A D F Wellness, I H A M, Health and Wellness Education. Original policy adopted on 1/30/2012.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's a lot to read, a lot of work.
It's a lot to listen to, I'm sure.
That, too. Rob, do you have?
Edits.
Edits?
Hey, Mary. Thank you.
I have one myself.
Thank you, help on you. We're inconsistent. Sometimes we refer to parent, sometimes we say parent/guardian. We'll just pick one. There are a couple of times where we forget to reference, and maybe it doesn't make a difference, marching band.
Can I ask about that, Rob?
Mm-hmm.
Because in the first big paragraph, we say including marching band, so you think that would cover it. But then, throughout the policy, it says or marching band, so.
Well, so there's, there are a couple of specific instances that I just want a clarification on that. In Section Four, the very last bullet about documentation being maintained by the athletic director, in the case of marching band, does the athletic director also maintain that information? Or, excuse me, manage that information?
I think the nurse does. I, Jack was in marching band, so I had to complete this. But I don't know what you discussed with Joe, but I'm, I don't think the athletic director's office maintained. You had to turn in your athletic, you know, the physical forms and the release and all of that to the nurse.
As far as all of the...
But now everything's on family ID.
It's on family ID, so that's where it's managed. That was one of the words that we changed to manage because it is an online platform.
And it's still on family ID for the marching band.
It's on for everyone.
Right, but the sentence here is it will be managed by the athletic director.
Well, family ID is managed by the athletic director.
Okay, so that does include marching band, okay?
It's a good question.
It is, and we kind of thought about that, but it's nice to have one endpoint.
Right. And there was another place on the last page where I filled in my own. I'm, I'm okay with if, if, I don't, because we do say at the very beginning, it's just sometimes we very specifically call it out, and sometimes we don't. So it just...
Was it the, the third bullet where it says graduated return to extracurricular athletic activities?
Yes, thank you.
And classroom studies? So athletic and/or, or and marching band activities?
Where's that?
I'm sorry, so the third bullet, actually, the third line in the third bullet.
What page?
The last page, the last page. I'm sorry, I was, I was paying attention to you, Rob.
Well, because on the second bullet, it also says the same sentence at the end. It says return to academic and extracurricular, so that's the one I was looking at.
Okay. That one references marching band activities in that same paragraph? Because up at the third sentence of the second bullet says, plan for a return to full academic and extracurricular, athletic, or marching band activities.
Right, and the next bullet does as well.
Right.
Yeah, for consistency, I think adding, adding it in.
The same language, yeah.
I think adding it in, in, so that's bullet two and bullet three on the last page, correct? Are there others that people flagged?
I did not flag it.
I did have a question on the front, third paragraph. The third sentence from the bottom, it says, well, it's really the fourth. Concussions generally cause specific signs that can be observed by others and symptoms that are reported by the athlete. And I just wrote marching band, question mark, because I just wasn't sure if it needs to be called that by the student?
I, I would say student.
By the student.
Yeah.
Makes perfect sense.
Sorry.
There may be others like that, too, Allison.
Okay, I'll keep my eye out for them.
Back in Section Four, annual training, first bullet, is it necessary to say annual training must be completed by all coaches? must be completed by all coaches, certified athletic trainers? Or is it by just saying it by coaches certified, does everyone have, does anyone that's involved in these activities from a supervision or instructional standpoint have to be certified?
They all have to go through that training, yes.
So should we say all in that case?
We say training will be held for all coaches in that bullet? Am I looking at the same one?
First bullet under Roman IV, is that where we are?
Yeah, annual training must be completed by coaches. It currently says annual training must be completed by coaches, certified athletic trainers, volunteers.
Aren't we striking that, though?
No, that's, that one's covered.
The very first bullet stands.
Sorry, I'm looking at the one below that, my bad, sorry.
Right.
It's a lot of policy. Sorry.
It's fine.
I'm not bringing my A-game to you.
I just know, I don't know if we need to say all or not. It sounds like it is all.
Yeah, because later in the third bullet, it says training will be held for all coaches and it's the same line, and volunteers to teach form, techniques, and skills. It does say all in that one.
So just insert all.
Just insert all. There you go. I like that.
That's fine, thank you. And I think they have one more.
Not sorry.
The very last bullet on the last page, is district possessive? Is it district's physician or district physician?
I think we usually refer to him as the district physician.
Okay.
Still Dr. Giuliano, I guess.
Back to the number four, the first bullet that we were just on, it's second we go. I think there's semantics there, but I know for this marching band and this school system, the word extracurricular does not apply to marching band. If you talk to the marching, if you talk to the music directors, you would tell you they're not extracurricular. So I think you should probably take the word out of extracurricular that follows marching band and maybe just take it out totally.
Marching band activities?
And marching band activities, just take out the word extracurricular.
Because it's athletic activities and marching band activities.
In athletics and marching band activities. And there's another reference later that worked fine, we didn't have extracurricular in there, so I think we should just strike that.
That's a good idea.
So to get really tacky or really picky, do we say and/or marching band activities there?
No.
Oh, because it's right.
Athletics and marching band versus-
So it only applies to athletes.
Right, only that do both.
And/or. There you go.
Oh, yeah.
And/or or.
No. See?
Yeah, it's good, that's right.
I have an odd question.
The others weren't odd.
Second impact syndrome, do we have to define that?
Say again?
Second impact syndrome, do we need to define that, or is that widely known?
Many of this just goes right back to the law, so that's-
That is the definition of it, though. Yeah, that's, everyone pretty much knows it.
That's why it was an odd question. Thank you.
I had a couple of things. I wondered if we could actually change the first sentence and just, I hate starting things that say it is the, I'd rather say the Foxborough School Committee is committed to providing a healthy and safe environment for all students.
Yep.
And then just on the second page, which one is it now? I guess it's the fourth bullet from the bottom where it says that the second to last sentence in that, second sentence from the bottom and fourth bullet from the bottom, where it says engaging in any unreasonable dangerous, is that unreasonable or dangerous or unreasonably dangerous? With me?
Yeah, I'm with you.
I would say unreasonable, I was going to say unreasonable or dangerous, but, or unreasonable and dangerous, one or the other.
I think the separate, just-
Or unreasonably dangerous.
I think we should take unreasonable out. I think dangerous is unreasonable.
Dangerous kind of speaks for itself.
I think dangerous stands alone. We don't want reasonable and unreasonable dangerous.
It's hard to define. Yeah, that, thank you.
She was thinking, isn't dangerous unreasonable?
Even better. So I would strike-
It was reasonably dangerous.
I would strike unreasonable. Yeah, that's what struck me there.
Before you go too much further, though, do we need to change that to student and because we're going back to band activities as well, right?
Student.
Engaging in-
Brent, that's another one where it says athletes and it could say prohibit students from engaging.
Well, yeah, but you got to keep going.
Well, this is talking about-
This is talking about athletic technique specifically.
Yeah.
So we have to decide, I'm not saying that's not a bad idea, but the whole sentence talks about athletic technique.
I understand.
Jabbering or any of those kinds of things.
Right.
So we either have to-
So you keep it for this, but do you add a sentence about?
What if I decided to use my trombone as a weapon? I could, right? That's dangerous.
You know-
Percussion.
I would offer a thought, my thought would be that this bullet is pretty effectively focused on athletic technique. I don't think, I'm not trying to skirt the marching band thing, but I don't think there's a lot of techniques in marching band that are materially need to be trained for danger, but I think it went in the law because marching band is an activity outside where people have collided by accident.
Or fall, yeah.
So I think this paragraph, this might work well to not mix it too much, and it doesn't mix it. This talks about coaches will train athletes for proper behavior and not being dangerous and unreasonable with equipment and things like that.
And this is about protective equipment for head injury.
Correct. So I would say this bullet works without-
Whack with a trombone slide and you're gone, but okay.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I just saw the Texas A&amp;M-
That would be unreasonable and dangerous.
I think it's okay. I'm just offering my opinion.
I think it's okay.
That is the focus of it.
All right, so are we leaving unreasonable dangerous?
No, we're just striking unreasonable.
Dangerous.
Leaving dangerous.
All right, so it will read in any dangerous activity that endangers.
Correct.
Actually, yeah, so when you, in the, one Mr. Cantfield corrected earlier about annual training must be completed by all coaches, further like three quarters of the way down that sentence, should it also say all marching band directors too, since it's all coaches? Should it be all the teachers helping the marching band?
Yes, that was actually there before and got struck. If you're talking about the two bullets, the third bullet?
No, no, I was still talking about the-
No.
The second bullet? The first bullet?
First bullet, number four.
Remember, we changed it to annual training must be completed by all coaches?
Right.
Should it be all marching band directors or teachers?
Isn't there only one marching band director?
Right, so this is really just to get to these different entities here, these different organizations, so maybe, maybe the word all is misleading because it's a matter of just getting to the coaches, getting to the trainers, getting to the volunteers.
Just trying to encompass everybody that who might be involved.
I-
It's a good point, Chris.
This is also probably a direct quote from the law because I think the law wrote it that way.
So take out all?
So this is what happened, just everything got pulled from the law. I'm not saying it's accurate, but just the way the law I think is written.
So should we take out all that we had added?
I mean, I, to me, it's intuitive that it's all is there. I mean, the staff, it doesn't mean most of the staff.
Intuitive, intuitive doesn't work in a legal setting.
No, but do you say all of the staff must go, or do you say the staff must go?
No, well, so, because if you just say staff, that says, okay, if I have one person that represents the staff, that's different than all staff.
But-
You can't, but when it comes down to-
That's where we go into the word designated, or, you know, so-and-so or designated.
If you just say staff, right, versus all staff, there is a, there's a literal difference in those two statements.
Right, if you're saying you could have a coaches rep, a certified athletic trainer rep, volunteer representative.
Okay. Well, it's really anyone who participates in athletic and marching band extracurricular activities, staff or student, and parents of student, they all have to be trained, right? That's what it says, that's the list.
That's the list.
That's the list.
So taking out the word all might be better, just to keep it at the list, yeah.
Okay, so we're striking all.
Which would go back to what the law-
If you are participating in these activities in any way, if you're a coach, a marching band director, you have a kid doing it, you are a kid doing it, you have to do the training. That's what this is, right?
Then why would you, if it says that, then why would you strike the word all? Because the word all says that.
It's, I didn't say I would strike it. I mean, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other.
But you don't have, great, yeah, I got that. I mean, I got that, and you have one head football coach.
And one athletic director, so it's just a little-
You have one tennis coach for the boys, you have one tennis coach for the girls.
But there are multiple coaches, there's not more.
Correct, but there are multiple parents, there are multiple, there's one athletic director who has to take the training. I get the whole, like, there are certain rules, there's only one.
But the grammar will be wrong if you do that because all is, you have everything plural then except the senior, marching band director. All marching band director, can't say that because there's not more than one.
Currently.
Right, well, there wouldn't be, we have one marching band director.
No, currently, I mean, it's a, you could put it, then put a parentheses with it-
An assistant marching band director.
Right. Or change it from marching band director to marching band-
Teachers. Because we changed it, because we talked about how it's not extracurricular, it's a class that's being taught by teachers.
Exactly.
And add a, like, add a marching band, like Tuesday night rehearsal, there's like three teachers there too, it's not just Mr. Bush, it'd be Mr. Bush, like Ms. Greenleaf and Mr. Albro.
The word director is the problem, that's what you're saying.
I mean, I don't know, but-
Marching band staff, marching band teachers. I mean, I-
This was probably pulled-
You actually make a good point.
This was absolutely pulled right from the law. And this was extracted exactly the way the law was written, so the law might have missed the word all, which I understand. So we can go with it. I think the intent of the law when it was written, you know, with some experience, was that somehow something happened in a marching band situation and they kind of lobbed it in at the last second. I think that's truly exactly how it went down. So they just tried to identify one person who had some kind of supervisory control of the safety of students, and they just picked the marching band director. But you're exactly right, there's volunteers, there's other directors, there's assistants.
In the case of our marching band in particular, it is not just Aaron that's out there, right?
Right.
And it is, I would assume that-
Because like if you're making it all coaches, like it should be, like if you talk about like football, like just like Jack Martinelli, is it all the coaches have to take, in which case-
And we mean all.
Head band director, but all the, all the band director, all the band teachers have to do it.
We expect them all to take it as well.
Well, I think it's a great question. The law doesn't tell them to do it, so our policy could differ from the law. If the law says marching band director, which I suspect it does, then the law didn't pick out all the marching band directors, but the law just picked out marching band director. So I guess it's the question of where we want to go, right?
Right. This is supposed to be a short meeting, too.
I know, I'm wondering what happened.
If you're worried about the part of speech thing, though.
Mike's probably back there saying, what happened?
You could say all-
Sitting next to me.
We can put the word all in there and list all the things that might be plural, and then add as well as the singulars, if you want, marching band director, athletic director, blah, blah, blah.
Or you could do the parentheses S thing that someone mentioned as well.
Say that again.
The parentheses S after, so it could be plural, or it could be singular.
That would work.
I like that one.
It wasn't my idea, that was someone else's.
Whoever had that idea, you're brilliant.
Yeah, the school physicians, same thing with that, school nurses, athletic directors, same thing with that, parents of students and students who participate, yeah.
Okay.
But they possibly, the asset covers whatever you want to cover, yeah.
Yep, there you go, all right.
Parentheses S then?
All right, we fixed it.
You're winning tonight.
Is there anything else on this? Would anyone like to make a motion? If there's nothing else, would anyone like to make a motion to move this forward for a second reading?
I'll move, I would like to move that policy, JJIF, prevention and management of head injuries and concussions in extracurricular athletic activities be moved forward to a second reading.
Anyone like to second that motion?
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Brent. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anyway, you said Brigham and Women's is reviewing this, so in the interim, if they have any feedback on the policy, you'll bring it forward at the next time we, okay, wonderful, thank you very much, and thank you again, Policy Subcommittee, for all your work. That's a lot of work right there.
That one was very tedious.
Yeah, it was.
Right, and all the background people who worked, so that before they could even start.
Absolutely, so I have had some experience with the inaction, this policy inaction this year, as a matter of fact, and it works just like it's supposed to work. I'm not going to go into great detail because I don't want to embarrass anyone that I may be related to, but it works just the way it's supposed to work. So, moving on to the Plan for Success, formally, the Strategic Plan update.
So this is, this is just a quick update, so we started in January.
Oh, sure it is, oh, absolutely. Wait till we start to look at your writing.
Oh, boy.
I'm going to red pen next time.
The red pens are out.
So, the Planning for Success model, it includes a multi-year improvement plan and annual action plans that will be created as part of this three-year plan. It is the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's recommendation as far as strategic planning and as far as an improvement process going forward. We have started to engage in that with a trained facilitator from the Department of Ed, Dr. Ruth Gilbert Whitner is recently retired superintendent, also trained through the Department of Ed. She has facilitated this process with four districts that I know of, and I had another district come to me even recently and say, how's it going? Because they wanted her to come and facilitate. And we've had two meetings so far, you have included in your packet a list of the dates and including as well the large planning team, which includes 28 people. And the exciting part here with these 28 people, many of them are folks that have not been on any of our committees.
I noticed recently.
So really fresh perspective, the process that we went through at the last meeting with that large group was a visioning process, and it was thinking about ahead, three years ahead in the year 2023, what does the Foxborough Public Schools look like? And then we were in all groups and spent the entire morning really pinning that out, and then where are we now? And we went, it was, that was a back-to-the-future exercise.
When you have all different grade levels of teachers and special education folks and our director of the Metco program, our food services director, this is a really great cross-section of our school community, so thank you.
It really is, and the discussion that came up from all of those groups, when we were in smaller groups, the cross-sections within those groups really was some great conversation. So we then have our administrator team that is a smaller planning group, so the activities that you see listed there are six different full half-day sessions that we engage in, but then principals are going out and through staff meetings, we will engage with other stakeholders to get voices, what do they want to see the Foxborough Public Schools look like in 2023?
I'm excited about this.
So that's a question that Allison and I will be asking our parent leaders tomorrow, and principals will be doing that through staff meetings, and then we'll engage with PTOs and other groups to be able to see what their vision for the future looks like. We'll be taking all of that information back, we'll be analyzing all of that through the SWAP process, and that will really start to bubble up the themes that we see that go forward. So I'll give you updates at different school committee meetings along the way, and we'll also be asking you what you envision the Foxborough Public Schools to look like in 2023.
We've got to block off a chunk of time for that, just guessing.
And that can be done electronically, too. We're talking about doing some of that through an electronic survey so we can gather that information, so people can really think about and reflect to provide that information.
That's great. All right, well, thank you for the update, and more to come on that, it's very exciting. Fantastic. Mr. Yukna, FY '20 budget update.
Okay, in your packet you have the current budget summary statement that we do. You'll notice by each of the five buildings that there were staff changes during the offseason and bringing us into this year. Quickly on the borough, basically, we had a retirement which obviously brought in a new teacher at a lower rate, so we saved $9,600, $9,700 there. In the elementary, on the IGO, we added a fourth grade and a kindergarten, we moved, sorry, a fourth grade to a kindergarten position, but then we added an assistant to that kindergarten position, so that cost us an extra $23,000. At the Taylor School, we basically had added a kindergarten and an assistant, so there was a $76,000 increase to that budget line. In the Ahern, we had the retirement of the principal and a new position, a new person taking the position at a lower rate. We had the reduction that we've already talked about on five- We had the reduction that we've already talked about on five, two fifth-grade teachers, as well as the two sixth-grade that we put in as long-term subs. So obviously, the differential between the long-term sub-rate and the original teacher rate plus a another resignation that happened during the year. So that's a $317,000 savings. If you go to the high school, basically, it was a single resignation and the replacement was about a $4,000 savings. Further down that page, Special Ed, basically, we we had enrollment changes that changed our requirements for educational assistance on the IEP levels. So there's about $74,000, $75,000, I mean, sorry, $54,000 savings there. And as far as our social work, our evaluation team, basically, we had a position change there, too, which came in at a lower rate, so there was a $14,000 savings there. The big one that's going to chew all of these savings up is what we've been talking about, and that's the incurred cost for out-of-district transportation and out-of-district tuitions. At this point, we know we're $25,000 over on the transportation, and we know we're $328,000 that we've currently documented. I'm going to caution you that we already have another $75,000 one that we believe will be hitting this list. So I've been talking about being off by about $400,000. That's what the $400,000 is. It's not hasn't been quantified yet. It hasn't been signed, so I don't have it into my actual things, but it's a number that will be coming forward to us as we move forward. If you look at. The next page six, which will bring you to plant operations because of retirements last year and new hires, we had a savings of $25,338. And that basically brings us to savings in the salary lines of about $342,531, but expense increases in the out-of-district placement line of $353,000. So as it stands right now, we are just under $11,000 unfavorable in the budget. We are continuing to look at different lines within the salary accounts to see if there's anything else that we will have as a savings this year, but we're also looking at many of our expense lines to see what things that we will not. You know, that will hold off on to basically make it through. My assumption is that our out-of-district will crest a little bit higher than $400,000 before the end of the year, based on what we're seeing. But I'm still confident that we will make it up through the different budget moves that we have to internally. We are filing for the extraordinary relief through the state, which means that we will be spending about 25%, a little over 25% more than we did last year. And because of that, there's a pool of money that's available on the state side, but it is, as I stated, a pool. So depending on how many people, you know, apply for it and can prove that they are over 25%, that's how the pool gets distributed. So it's no fixed percentage or anything. It's a fixed amount of money, and depending on how many districts come at it, will be how much you get. The good thing about that, if we do qualify, is that is immediate relief this year. So if possible, I could get $100,000 as an example that I wouldn't have to try to make up, and we will know that in the May timeframe. So, you know, in the meantime, we will be conservative to make sure that we have the ability to try to make it through this.
You said May?
May is when they they give you the idea of where the circuit breaker. Extra won't go. We have to apply for it in March, so we have deadlines. We've already met the first deadline, which was to tell them that we believe we're going to be in that group of 25%. Excess.
Thank you for the update. Do you need a motion to approve this? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the FY '20 budget summary statement of two, three, 2020?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Debbie.
Second.
Thank you, Rob. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Thank you, Bill. All right.
Thank you.
This brings us to other matters, and actually, I think I will start us off. We've got a couple of things coming up this week. We have our meeting with the Advisory Committee to present the school budget this Wednesday, February 5th at 7:00. And Bill and I and Amy met with the ed liaisons today at 1:00 and had a good meeting with Jack Martin and Sharon Weisskruger. Am I saying her name right?
Weisskruger.
Thank you. And so we're looking forward to bringing our budget forward to the Advisory Committee. On Saturday, Bill and I met with Mark Elfman, Seth Ferguson, and Bill Keegan to discuss the upcoming budget process and overall town financial planning strategy. And it was discussed that we or decided during that discussion that we need to have another joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen Advisory Committee and the School Committee. Do you want to chime in on any of this, Bill? At this point, that meeting is going to be this coming Monday, February 10th at 7:00. For whoever can attend.
Yeah. Again, Monday?
Monday, the 10th, a week from tonight at 7:00.
And what is that's.
Where?
At the Town Hall. In the Selectmen's Meeting Room.
The basic, the basic thing is really there was a document that was created in FY '19, which was what the foundation of the Borough Project funding was about, which was a financial, a five-year financial plan. And extremely important that everybody get back on the page that that plan was what we were, you know, basing everything we moved forward on. Not that things couldn't change within the plan, but you you couldn't just ignore that that existed going forward. And I think, quite honestly, a lot of people, it hasn't been brought forward. I've, as I've said before, I monitor that. I was basing our budget last year based on it. I looked at it again this year as I'm going through it, but the whole town needs to be doing that. The ironic thing was that in the discussions that have been had was that the town, current town operating budget, including debt service for like the Borough Project, is currently at a 5.8% mark, which is obviously above the 3.5% that the Board of Selectmen were talking about. You look at this plan and the plan called for it to be 5.5%. So it this is not unusual, but the thing that was driving it is the fact that the 3.5%, I believe, was supposed to be based on the operating budgets, not based on the town combined budget with debt service and everything else. Because obviously, the $1.3 million cost for the Borough Project next year would would increase any spending that you were going to have, even if everything was just in a normal form. So I think that the the decision to have this meeting is really to get everybody back on the same page, make sure everybody understands what that plan was and how that plan works going forward. Not that that means you don't make changes or you can't make adjustments to things that are there, but just to make sure that everybody understands how the whole financial plan is built and how we are going to move forward. And I I think that document should be a living document that keeps getting added to, so that, again, everybody understands how our tax money is spent over the years and moving forward and what the benefits are of the way the town currently is operating. So I think I personally think it's a very important meeting because it's a piece that should have been done already before the process even started.
Well, you have to, if I'm hearing you correctly, clarify terms in terms of what we talk about.
Absolutely.
How do we talk about debt service on.
Right.
You know, large projects such as Borough and other large projects we've done.
Yeah, I mean, there.
And they're always decoupled from.
Right.
Operating.
Yeah, there's 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 your general departments and operating expenses. There's your fixed costs, which tend to be your debt services. I mean, we lump in pensions and and health insurance and those fixed costs, but there is some variable, obviously, based on number of staff positions. And then the third component really is your enterprise funds, your water and sewer. Those three things, the the first two work together as a main thing. The third thing is a totally separate entity and operates. But you just really, like I said, there's, we made a decision on Town Hall to be under the debt, under our tax base. We made a decision to have the Borough underneath that. And it was very well documented as to what the the impacts would be on that. And again, we can't now just say that that didn't exist, and that's not how we're basing this town. Again, no problem if someone doesn't like a new hire someplace or, you know, something else. That's that's not the issue here. The issue strictly is that everybody needs to be informed on how the bigger picture operates going forward.
Right. I think that's a good summary of what was we talked about on Saturday and why we want to have this, why we are having a joint, another joint meeting. So that's Monday, the 10th at 7:00 PM, and I know it's not was not on our school committee schedule, but I I hope you'll be able to make it. And that brings me to my next point, which is we seem to be very meeting-heavy for the beginning of February, and our next scheduled meeting is February 24th, followed by a March 2nd meeting. So I I would propose that we cancel our February 24th meeting. I've talked to Dr. Berdus, and she, the only items we have on the agenda are the policy items that we have talked about here, which need some thought and rework. And the superintendent's mid-cycle review, which Amy is willing to do on March 2nd. So if it's, you know, agreeable to the committee, I would I would propose that we cancel our meeting on the 24th and have two meetings in March, the March 2nd meeting and then.
And those are the two regular.
And those are our two regular scheduled, those are already scheduled on our calendar. So unless you want to meet on the 24th, I will still be on vacation, and you can certainly meet without me. But I don't like to miss anything either, but that's not why. I just feel like we have met and met and met, and we've got a couple more meetings coming up, so. Thoughts from the committee? Proposal.
Question?
Yes.
In people's experience here, might anything come out of? Can you imagine anything coming out of the presentation with AdCom or the joint meeting with Selectmen, AdCom, and School Committee that might benefit or necessitate a meeting? I'm just asking that because I'm.
I would I would tend to say no. I would tend to say no because you have already, by law, voted your budget. So any change at this point really is a change directed from the town side. You may decide at some point later to agree with the change, but in general, you have already taken your vote and your position on on your budgets as they move forward. So we can't revote them in February and change it because by law, we had to do it by the end of January.
Even if they. Ask us to reconsider something.
We would have to be formally amending everything.
Right.
Okay, and that's fine. Then due process for that. Thanks. That helps.
And we have the meeting a week later.
Yeah, exactly. I'm I'm just asking the question. So I'm, given that, I'm very fine holding off until March.
I'm okay with it, too.
Is there any impact on the schedule for like filling the Director of Student Services position? No?
Okay. Then I'm okay.
Your, all of those meetings will go along.
And you were planning to bring a candidate forward in the first March meeting or the second March meeting?
Originally, it was the second, but we talked about we we do have the flexibility to move it up if should we choose to, so.
But you wouldn't be ready by the 24th in any way.
No, definitely. They're interviewing, and then they they forward next candidates to the next level, then I have to interview and reference Jack.
There's a school vacation in there, so people might not be available, so.
So are, do we have consensus about canceling the 24th meeting and then sticking with our our two meetings in March schedule?
Yes, please.
All right, very good. Thank you for that.
So, all right, cancel.
So we're meeting Wednesday with the AdCom, next Monday.
Right, then cancel.
At Town Hall and canceling the meeting on the 24th.
And then our next scheduled meeting will be March 2.
March 2. Yep.
Very good.
All right, and I just have one other thing under for my other matters. I I assume you all got the MASC policy newsletter via email. And I wanted to congratulate our Policy Subcommittee for being on top of virtually everything in the policy newsletter that they said we need to do, we have already done. Which is great.
Go team.
Go team. We've we have done just about all of the policies listed. So, no, great job, and yay yay you and yay all of us. But the one policy that is, the last policy listed, is educational equity. It is a new policy. And I have talked to Dr. Berdus about it. I I don't think it actually needs any changes, but I would love for the Policy Subcommittee to read it and give us our thought, your thoughts, and perhaps think about bringing this forward at a future meeting. Amy, would you like to speak to this? I think it.
I had read the policy the same day that Tina had, and reading, I I don't see changes I would make, and it's definitely in line with what we have been talking about for the last two years. And with my strategy for district improvement, it just really reinforces what's important in the work that we're doing.
Okay.
Okay, all right, great. Those were my two things. So we're still on other matters. Amy, would you like to go next under other matters?
We have a program of studies night coming up on here at the high school, which is also the AP night. That's on Wednesday from 6:00 to 7:30.
This coming Wednesday?
Yes. The Winter Jazz Festival is Thursday.
Nice.
And then our Spanish exchange students will be going to Costa Rica on February 13th.
Very exciting. All right.
Feb. 13th.
Awesome.
Oh, Costa Rica.
Alison?
I mentioned at the last meeting that with the conclusion, because we didn't need to continue the search for the K-38 Math Science Director, we will be starting the search for the ELA Social Studies Title I. That is actually beginning this Thursday, and it is being led by Michelle McCarthy, Principal at the Borough School. And so we're excited to get that rolling.
She'll do a great job. That's fantastic.
And how about for the new principal? Is that going to get underway?
We will end up, we need to get through a couple of these other searches and get those started, but yes, Dr. Rogers, the Taylor School will be leaving at the end of the year for personal reasons, as I had shared with you earlier, and so that it's the next search that will be starting.
Yes, we'll finish Director of Student Services. We'll finish ELA Curriculum Director, and then we'll move on to that.
When, do you know when that will be posted?
I don't, not yet. We just got out the the committee for the ELA Curriculum Director today, so take a little breath and group again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard, do you have anything?
I do not have anything.
Rob?
I do not.
Bill? Janet? Chris? Pierre? Brent, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I do not.
Debbie?
I'm very excited, seeing I did drive by Borough School. I can't believe the progress. The building is going up. The big hole for all the drainage is done. It's really exciting. And I hope everybody has a very wonderful. February vacation that they you'll all be coming back refreshed. And then. The option to take out papers for the next election has, is it's open. And of course, after more than 50 years in public school education involvement, I think it is time that somebody else take up the torch. So I would like everybody to know, in fairness to people who might want to step forward to to run, that I am not going to take out papers to run again. And I think Winnie the Pooh said it better than I can. He said, how lucky I am to have something that makes saying goodbye so hard.
Very nicely done. Thank you so much.
Yes, at all of your service.
Well, and I want you.
Not going anywhere yet.
You're done yet.
Oh, no, I'm not done yet.
We have a meeting Wednesday and Monday, so we're not going anywhere.
That's right, yeah. Another one was added for Wednesday, and now another, oh, I know I'm not off the hook. I didn't say I was going to jump, but I did not say I'm jumping.
Nice segue, yeah, yeah.
Can we revisit that February meeting?
And I want you all to know that I am a text or a phone call away. If you want to double-check any historicity or if you have a question.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Debbie.
Thank you for everything, and thank you for putting this out there for people who might be interested in running, so.
Yes, it's it's more fair for everybody. And seeing as I, we have no February meeting, I just decided, well, I better do it now.
Thank you.
How many total years on school committee have you served?
This is my 16th, plus all the teaching I've done makes more than 50 in public school.
Wow.
Awareness, I should say.
And how many in Foxborough?
Well, 25 teaching in Foxborough plus 16 here.
Forty-one to.
Good with the math there.
Just the community of Foxborough, right?
He is a graduate of Foxborough Public Schools. We, you know, we do it right here.
Double digits, you're good, right?
I can do all numbers, not just singular numbers, all numbers.
All right, well, we're we're only about an hour over our estimated time tonight, but this has been a great meeting. Which was very good work.
The policies are very important.
Oh, we know, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. They're very important, and it was a very good discussion, and thank you all for your input. And if there's nothing else, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I would.
Thank you, Richard. Okay. Thank you, Richard. Okay. Any further discussion?
And two more meetings.
All those in favor?
Yeah, I'll quit. Thank you.
Five, zero, zero. Good night, everybody.